Diane.
Consent and approval today, we have exonerations. There are eighty-four listings, fifty-two thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-one cents for tax years 2012, 2013. The requests were a 2013 replacement ticket on number one six seven nine zero for Louis J. and Jody N. McDonald. The Disha orders as of July twenty-four, 2013. Statement of services from Cynthia Stafford, Lynn Crane, George Armistead, the Disha Commissioners. General County Fund expenditures, three hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Full Severance Fund, twenty-six thousand, one forty-three, forty-four. Justin Ridge Park, nine thousand, two fifty-nine, fifty-two. Nine-one-one cash, sixty thousand, eight seventy-nine, eighteen. Law enforcement, forfeiture, one thousand, three thirty-nine, twenty-two, for a total of four twenty-seven, twenty-six, thirty-three. I have miscellaneous budget revisions, based being the end of the year, or the beginning of the new year, changes for the General County Fund. This includes the unassigned fund balance, and funds to be moved to County Commission, County Clerk, Circuit Clerk, Sheriff's Tax Office, prosecuting attorney, professor, agricultural agent, county clerk election, courthouse, other buildings, data processing, rehabilitation properties, cleaning, litigation expense, sheriff law enforcement, services process, jail reimbursable, jail non-reimbursable, home confinement, emergency services, dog warding, central garage, David Court Center, sewer, water, water control, parks, and other buildings. Also in full severance, I have in-house revisions. I actually, these are state approved also, for fire departments, parks, arts and humanities, bears and festivals, historical commission, social services, human resources. I have in-house revisions for O-2952, and this is Senior Center, one for Four-H Camp, and one for Everett Drive Park and Parks.
Move for approval of the above read items and the budget revisions.
Second.
I have a motion in second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passed. Thank you. Renette.
And we have the Boca Grant reimbursement for June of 2013, three thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. The HUD grant for the City of Morgantown, Community Development Block Grant, six hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty cents, that's also this month, June. The JABG grant for M.A.Y.S.P., June 2013, nine eleven fifteen. The JAG grant for Ready BIC, June of 2013, two thousand eighty-one dollars and eighty cents. And the David Court Center grant, June of 2013, twenty-four thousand, nine seventy-three, ninety-three. And the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Mount Air Boys and Girls Club, an amount of six thousand ninety-one dollars and nineteen cents.
Is that it? Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion in the second on, favor say aye.
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 Motion passed. Thank you.
I also have a request to change for a project amendment for the West Virginia Development Office for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for Valley Healthcare Systems. They originally wanted the money that they were approved to be used for computers and other related equipment. They have since fulfilled that with another request, so we are asking the Development Office to change the scope of their grant to amending the furniture and improvements. There's two different sheets that can't decide.
Do we need a mo— oh, yeah, Rose, okay.
We resolve that the Montague County Commission hereby authorizes the Honorable Ellen Callen, President of the Montague County Commission to acclimate its behalf by signing a request for project amendment for the West Virginia Development Office in order to amend the scope of the project's presented provisions of the Community Participation Grant Program. Amendments are being requested in the following projects: Valley Healthcare Systems for ten thousand dollars, and also Valley Healthcare Systems for four thousand dollars.
Move for resolution. Resolution be approved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Renette. Tom Ammon, Mr. Ammon, on consideration of approval by the County Commission, the submission of the West Virginia State Tax Department, would apply a five percent administrative fee to a certain collection of sales and use taxes that—
It's Tom Ammon out there.
Who am I talking to?
Tom Ammon.
Tom Ammon.
I haven't seen you.
Who's that?
He's back.
Tom, you're up. Come on up and have a seat. Think we know what we're going on the letter. Got a chance to read it.
Okay.
It's good to me, because I want to explain it for some people to know what we're doing.
Yeah, just in April of this year, I guess at the same time that the legislation was enacted to approve the collection of the excise tax during the same session, separate legislation was enacted that, well, with respect to sales and use tax and excise taxes generally, and allowed the State Tax Department to collect a five percent administrative fee with respect to excise taxes that they would be administering through their department. As I read the legislation, I don't believe that it would allow the Tax Department to impose that five percent fee on the excise tax for the Town Center District. And it also gave the Commission the authority to propose a rule with respect to the collection of those taxes and the fee, which they did. And they proposed a rule on June twenty-fifth and put that out for comment, which I reviewed and I've sent to you all. And as I read it, I think it primarily applies to their collection of municipal sales and use tax under the Home Rule Pilot Program, and some other municipal sales and use tax with respect to pensions and things like that, or if municipality wants to replace their B and O tax with an excise tax. So I don't read it to apply to county excise tax districts such as the Town Center, but I think that we want to be sure that they don't intend to interpret it that way in the future, or if they do, if they do have any present intentions, the Tax Department, to impose a five percent fee on excise tax districts, I think as the Commission, I think you'd want to know that before we actually issue bonds for this project. Because after we issue bonds, if they increase the fee from one percent to five percent, it obviously, you know, impairs the ability to repay those bonds on a same timeframe that we thought they'd be repaying. So they've—it's a proposed rule of the Tax Department. They're, you know, requesting comments, if anyone has any comments. I suggest that the Commission send a letter of comment to the Tax Department that would just make—ask them to make the proposed rule more clear, that it wouldn't apply to excise tax districts, and therefore we have no ambiguity. And I think that also would sort of prompt them, if they have any intention to apply this fee in the future, to these districts, to step forward and say, well, wait a minute, you know, maybe we would like to impose this fee. As I said, we want to know that now before we issue bonds.
I think it's ambiguous enough that—
Yeah.
Someone could step in later on, maybe not this tax—
Right, exactly.
So they need to get on the record whether they'd apply it or doesn't apply.
Exactly, exactly. So that's my—that's what I would suggest, and we prepared a comment letter for you all to sign and submit to the Tax Department, that comments are actually due by noon tomorrow. So we want to—we want to get that in, and this is really our last opportunity to do that. Any questions about any of that?
So all we're—so all we're doing is just sending the letter for clarification?
Right.
Okay.
Well, actually, I think we're saying that we don't interpret it that way, and if you interpret it this way, you better tell us now.
That's right, yeah. Our comment is that they—
Be progressive rather than—
They modify the rule a little bit to make explicit that it doesn't apply to this type of a district.
Right.
I'll move that we submit the letter to the West Virginia State Tax Department.
Second.
I have a motion in the second on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay.
You got it right here, Tom. If you sign it, you'll have it.
Okay. Oh, great. Alright, perfect.
Progressive, that's rather than reactive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Financial scheme off balance.
Because I think I've got to the tax number.
Thank you for being the head of the game on this, Tom.
Sure, sure.
Really appreciate that.
Okay, not a problem. Thank you for your time.
Certainly. Discussion and petition for minor boundary adjustment by City of Westover was set for ten-thirty. It's not really a public hearing, so I don't think we need to wait on it. Saw Mr. Stranko out there earlier. Mr. Melek is here. Mayor, run in. We're—I don't think it matters that we're early on this.
It don't matter to us.
Okay. Maybe we can start by Mr. Stranko. Just identify everyone, if you would, Mr. Stranko, as to who's with you, and then I'll have them all, and then you can begin.
Good morning, Mr. President Commissioners. I'm joined, of course, by Mayor Johnson, Mayor Westover, Chief Panico, Chief of Police at City of Westover, and of course, my colleague, Ryan Simonton.
Okay. Representing them all.
Good morning. My name is Phil Melek, and I'm with Jackson Kelly. My colleague, Heather Gentile, is with me today. We're here on behalf of the Mall and the Commons, as they're colloquially referred to, the two entities that own a substantial portion of the property that's the target of this annexation petition. With us today is Mr. Harry Grandin. He's been here before on various aspects of this. He's the manager at the Mall. Thank you for your time today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stranko, how do you wish to proceed today?
Well, Mr. President, the petition's been filed. It's self-explanatory. I don't really have any open statement to make, other than we appreciate the Commission's consideration of the petition, and hope that it would enter the order today, accepting the petition, and then scheduling proceedings according to that order.
I have a request.
Yes.
If possible, Mr. Stranko, I'd like for you to address the issues on the application, and whether or not the application by the City of Westover meets those on page eighty-nine. We all have a copy—I don't know if you have a copy of it or not—
Yes.
But it starts off by, the County Commission may develop a form, which this Commission has not done, and then it starts—it lists a number of items to comply the application should contain. And I'd just like for you to address those items—
Yes, sir.
—because I think that's where we're headed here for a decision on whether or not this application should be accepted and set for a public hearing.
Yes, sir, I'm happy to do it. So we're on—
Can I interject something? Before we get started, could I ask that all comments from either side and anyone in the community relate only to the specific petition? And I want it real clear about that. That's all we are discussing today, the actual petition, and that anything outside of that would be out of order. Because I believe that—I think that's where we run into a problem. We are only here to discuss and debate whether it is right for this petition for us to move forward or accept it, and that's what I would like to request. How the other County Commissioners—
I—if I understand you correctly, and let me just, for the sake of clarity—
Yes.
—is that you're asking the same thing that I'm asking, is to address the issues of the acceptance of the application to move forward, and we have that decision to make. And I would like to ask both parties—
Right.
—to address those points, and those are the only points that we really need to consider today—
Today.
—because this is not a public hearing. This is to—either to disapprove or approve the application for the annexation.
That, yeah, for clarification. I want to make it very clear on that. We agree on that issue, then.
Mr. Stranko, do you have any response to that, or—
I'll be happy to proceed. I'll read the Commission's—
Mr. Melek, do you have any response to that?
I don't want to sit silent, because I am prepared to address those threshold issues. And, well, I do want to bring to your attention, particularly to yours, Commissioner Bloom, since you weren't involved in the last round of this, that some of those issues have been the subject of—and are the subject of an adjudicatory proceeding that's pending in the Circuit Court. But I do intend to focus on the threshold issues.
Okay.
I just want to be—I want to forewarn you about that, and I don't want to offend anyone by being deemed out of order when I give you a little bit of that legal history and background.
Well, I'm going to state very clearly that I am not here to debate the issue at all, nor from my understanding, and I made it very clear when we accepted—we received the forms last time, that we would only be debating at this time whether this petition meets the standards for us then to move forward. And that's what I am planning—to listen from both sides, because I want to hear that legal argument. Is it that—does that help you understand?
It helps me very much, and I hope that what I've had to say helps you. And I also want you to know, and we've already put this in writing, we will be requesting that you take no further action on this, but I think you're going to understand why we're asking—
Okay, that's fine.
—for that once you've heard from us.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Look, if I might just add one comment of clarity, I want to make sure that we don't get into a discussion of historical incidents that have happened in prior cases, because Mr. Bloom did not sit in the public hearings. He did not hear them firsthand. So to provide him information with what's happened in the past, which is really deemed is not relevant to this application—I just want, for the record, I want that clear, that we're not going to delve into the past applications. At least, that's my position. And I think we share that position, that this is a new application. Mr. Bloom has no idea what occurred in the past, doesn't know what would be true and what would not be true, and also would not know the application of that information, since he didn't hear it firsthand. So I guess I'm just reiterating, this is a new application, and that's the way it needs to be treated.
I'll say no further. My discussion are your time for when it's my turn to address the elements of the threshold. I'm not sure we want to hear further between you.
No, just a second. I got to make this one. And I would really like the input from both attorneys. The difficulty County Commissions have is that sometimes they set as executives. Sometimes they set as adjudicatory bodies, such as in probate court. And sometimes they set as legislative. The legislature has never made clear, as we all agree—we've all agreed, I don't think anyone could argue that this is a very poorly written statute. I think we've all agreed to that. I think what happened previously, under Judge Gujoe, is he declared this was a legal proceeding. We had to act as administrative law to it. Now, the only way that any reasonable person could find that there would be no prejudice to bring it back again and again was to be to throw out Gujoe's order completely, Fox vetoed Gujoe's order, and said, no, it's a legislative proceeding. A legislative proceeding can come back over and over and over again. I think that's the—that's the difficulty that we're having right now, because if it's a legislative proceeding, it can come back over and over and over again. And Fox is the last ruler, so we're kind of stuck with that ruling. Do you all agree with that?
I'm not sure the court has addressed the nature of the proceeding, Mr. President, clearly defining either as legislative or judicial.
Mr. Melek?
We're getting even farther away from what I intend—I will strive to stay focused on, on what judge—
No, I just want to—this simple question answered, because I am—I'm just trying—I've always tried to do the right thing. I—Gujoe said it was a legal, and you had the findings and facts, and everything had to be legal, and we had to act as judges. Now, I disagreed with that in my memorandum, and I said, why I disagree with that. A prime example, a few years ago, before I was a Commissioner, a person came in and he filed an attorney for fees against an estate. Now, once he filed for those fees against the estate, this Commission made a ruling. He appealed that. Just because, three months later, I came on, that attorney could not come back and refile for those fees because a different person, because in probate, we're adjudicator, and the only avenue is to go through the courts. In this, it historically has been considered legislative somewhat, some of the cases different. And that's—the legislator's fault. The legislator's fault caused that. But Gujoe clearly said it was a legal proceeding. Fox defying that there's no prejudice had to have filed that it's legislative. Is that not true?
It is not true.
Okay, well, I'm wrong.
Judge Fox granted the motion to dismiss of Westover over our objection and over the objection of Mr. Megrow, who was representing you in that proceeding, and is still—
He was representing the Commission.
Correct.
I want to make that clear, because that's been confusing. He does not represent Ellen Callen.
I didn't mean to—
He does not represent Tom Bloom. He does not represent Bill Bartoli. He represents the Commission.
Correct.
So I don't want that to be confused.
All right, and I didn't mean to suggest otherwise, but—
Okay.
—for everyone who's listening here and down the road, where I guess we're recording this, I meant the Commission, of course.
Sure.
That is all that Judge Fox did. His bases for doing so, we believe, were ill-informed, misinformed, and we have filed a motion to bring that ruling back before him for his attention. That motion was served on the fifteenth. It was docketed here in the Circuit Courthouse on the seventeenth, and Judge Fox has under advisement our request that it be set for a hearing. So that is what Judge Fox did. He did not address, and Mr. Stranko sure will confirm this, any distinction between legislative and adjudicatory functions, as those terms might characterize what you're charged to do under eight-six-five. What we understand is before you today is the application and petition that was presented to you last Wednesday. And I've listened very carefully to the audio recording of last week's proceedings, by the way, that was presented with a proposed order. Mr. Simonton presented that to you. Mr. Stranko took leave from the presentation, if that helps you recall—
Yeah, my—
—how this came about. And that order, as I understand it, they want you to adopt today. That order purports to address appropriately the threshold requirements of eight-six-five. I am here today principally to argue against the findings expressed in that order, and that I intend to persuade you that it does not satisfy those threshold requirements. And in making that point to you, I do intend and must, on behalf of my clients, show you how that application differs from the one last submitted by Westover, but it will remain focused on those threshold requirements that they're asking you to resolve. Now, as to any distinction between a legislative and adjudicatory function, my recollection, and I have it here in a very large box with all the other paper that's been generated by this over the years, a copy of Judge Gujoe's opinion. And I think it is fair to say succinctly that what Judge Gujoe found problematic about the County Commission's rejection of petition number one, this being number three, was that the County Commission informed itself as to the seven factors in the subsequent subsection of eight-six-five by going outside the hearing room. And that's why it was remanded, that's why a new petition was filed, that's why the County Commission, at taxpayer expense, hired a court reporter to transcribe the comments that were given to you over a couple of rounds, several hours' worth of hearings. We are not to that point yet, and I don't believe you need to have a transcription made of what those people have to say to you. We are arguing matters of law and policy under the threshold requirements of eight-six-five. And I pledge to you that I will stay focused on those issues today, because that's what I understand to be before you.
Well, I understand—say what you're saying. I disagree with you about Judge Gujoe's order. Judge Gujoe's order was clearly creating us into a judicial body. And Fox defying that there was no prejudice says that we're a legislative body. I just disagree with you on that. So I think—I think we're all—I think we're all on the same page to continue, but I wanted to clarify that.
Just a couple of comments to follow up, Mr. President. Judge Gujoe's in a tough spot, because he had to take an appeal that is authorized by the statute, and he had—really, I take exception to some of Mr. Melek's description of Judge Gujoe's order, but essentially, he had no record with which to take the appeal. So he had to construct something. I think this is both legislative and judicial, and the only reason it's judicial is because we're entitled to an appeal to Circuit Court. And I will say again, as we've said in writing, this third try is not the case. In fact, this is a new Commission that was seated in January of 2012. It can't have it both ways. You know, we first went to the judge and said, okay, let's just use the record from the old proceeding and give it to this Commission, let them review the record, make a decision. No, no, can't do that, because we have a new Commissioner. That ruling, or that perception, I think, is exactly the case. Since the last application, we've had an election where this issue was an issue in play with the voters. Certainly, the voters in Westover, and I think all over the county, would see that a new Commissioner, this is a new Commission, new President. This is an entirely new proceeding, because we have new Commissioners, a new Commission adjudicating the application. So this is not the third application. This is the first application before this Commission.
Okay, I understand your point.
With that being said, and now that we got that all out of the way—
Well, that's what I was going to say.
Yes.
I was going to say, I think—I think we're all on the same page here now. We may have disagreements as to what the different law means, but that's insignificant in terms of how to proceed. So, Mr. Stranko—
Yeah.
—you may proceed.
Now we can hear.
Back to Mr. President. The central issue, and we agree—I think we all agree amazingly that the statute's not well drafted, as the President's already observed. But there's case law to address that issue. When the legislature remains silent on a key issue in the statute, and I'm quoting from the Supreme Court, Foster Foundation versus Gaynor, March 2011, "Our longstanding practice"—that pronoun is the Supreme Court—"our longstanding practice is to defer to the executive department's construction of a statutory scheme that is entitled to admit it." The legislature has delegated to you the execution of this statute. Where it doesn't define specific terms, you have the prerogative to define those terms. Now, one of the issues that—before we address Commissioner Bartolo's request with regard to subsection C, one of the issues is, are we even talking about a minor boundary adjustment? Well, this goes directly to the Ford Foster Foundation case. The legislature didn't define minor. You get to define minor. It is your prerogative to do that. But what is a permissible construction of minor? Well, in the case of Inray Morgantown in 1976, there was an appeal taken on an annexation case to the Supreme Court. Now, the issue of minor wasn't before the Supreme Court, I want to be clear on that. I'm not citing this as controlling precedent, but as information for you, that the issue there was a six-hundred-and-forty-three-acre minor boundary adjustment proposed by the City of Morgantown. And it was litigated as a minor boundary adjustment all through the Supreme Court. That issue was never brought, so we know that. That County Commission considers six-hundred-and-forty-three acres a minor boundary adjustment. As we think about what a minor boundary adjustment is, the city doesn't manage by square foot. The city manages by activities. There is one common activity up there. There are really two landowners we're talking about in the minor boundary adjustment, technically three, because Commons and the Mall are owned by different entities, both with the lead member being Glimper Corporation. So, common activity, two owners, or three, however you want to look at it, few owners, and the precedent that we've seen before that this county has considered six-hundred-and-forty-three acres as a minor boundary adjustment. So I think we are in the right section, an annexation by minor boundary adjustment. Now, to Commissioner Bartolo's point, you will notice in the petition, I don't know if, Mr. President, you want me to go through the petition itself, but I can certify, and you would agree, I think, that if we look at C-one through six, these are the number of businesses and percy— these are the number of businesses and persons residing is included in the application, meets and bounds map, our plan for additional public services, many of which we're already providing, a statement of the impact on private solid waste, which we know is not relevant. That's a private contract. Statement on the impact of fire protection, fire insurance rates are included. Of course, Westover's already providing fire protection up there. Statement of how the proposed annexation will affect the municipality's finances and services. Well, we're not sure about that because the conundrum, of course, is we don't see the books of the businesses up at the mall. We have no idea. We can only guess what the revenues would be from the, from the B and O taxes. There is also a confounding prerequisite that we have to tell you that it's impossible for us to do this by any other method. And we recite that on the first page of the, of our application, that those two methods, annexation by election, and you'll call that, an annexation by election means that the citizens of Westover vote and the businesses and landowners in the proposed territory vote. And we've got to win both elections. So we know we're going to spend money and not, not win that election. So we can't, we believe it'll cost over $5,000 to conduct the election. So we conclude in that case that this is not cost-effective or efficient under eight six two. Under eight six four, an annexation without election by petition of majority of freeholders and firms doing business in the territory, while we know by the virulent and extensive opposition that we've found with regard to this application that that's not efficient or cost-effective as well. If we come before the county commission under eight six five, annexation by minor boundary adjustment, we believe we've met all the prerequisites for you to accept this application as a minor boundary adjustment and schedule proceedings accordingly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stranko. Mr. Melick, you can come forward.
Me, thank you.
You don't have to stay back there. Jamie, can you give him a cheer too?
Thank you.
Dave, maybe you can slide down just a little bit. Thank you. You can get a little bit closer to Guy in there, Dave. He's not listening. Mr. Melick, go to the area.
Thank you for answering your time. The order that was presented last Wednesday, along with the annexation petition, and that you've been asked again here today to enter and adopt, has three threshold issues which we would, I don't know if that is the right word, but we would strongly dispute. We would dispute that, in the context of the facts of this case, that this petition is a minor boundary adjustment. Mr. Stranko's already made reference to a prior county commission deeming a 643-acre parcel, apparently, although it wasn't an adjudicated issue, to be within such a description. So I feel that he'd also be comfortable with me making reference to the prior county commission's finding in the order that addressed the petition that's the subject of Civil Action 13 double A one, to not be a minor boundary adjustment. That is in this county commission's last order on this previous effort of Westover to annex our client's properties. Our position as to that issue was set forth, among other places, in our May 21, 2012 letter to this county commission, the last time Westover attempted to use this statutory device to annex our client's properties. And I quote from that letter, and it remains our position today because the substance of the petition remains identical. "Westover has not and never will be able to explain how its request can be construed as a, quote, 'minor boundary adjustment,' end quote. We believe that this provision contemplates things such as conforming the edge of a municipality to a parcel property line, highway, or other logical, quote, 'boundary,' end quote. The application does not even involve an, quote, 'adjustment,' end quote, to a, quote, 'boundary,' end quote. Nor can forcibly incorporating over 100 acres constitute, quote, 'minor,' end quote, under any reasonable understanding of those terms." End of passage from the letter. But we also pointed out in the record that informed this county commission's last decision that this is a fully developed shopping center. It's been there for years. The record before your, the last county commission made very clear that Westover had foregone efforts extended by the developers to engage constructively in the development of this real estate. It was only after, without the engagement of municipal government in Westover, that investors made, created this mall, which now employs many people and is an engine for your local economy here in Montegoa County. Only after the fruit was ripe did Westover want to come to this orchard to pick some B and O fruit. The order that's been presented to you includes a finding that they, that Westover wants you to adopt to proceed with this application. Quote, "The application meets the threshold requirements for consideration as a minor boundary adjustment provided in West Virginia Code, Section eight six five, C one through seven." We, again, would dispute that. And we would respectfully invite your attention to the position that we expressed to the last county commission that rejected the substantially similar effort on the part of Westover. The findings in this, the, the, the indications in the petition about such things as taxes, the last county commission found inadequate and put Westover to a much more arduous process to develop as much information as it could. It asked us to develop some information, which we did, all of which came before this county commission the last time, before you reached a finding that you were ready to proceed to the seven-factor test in the subsequent subsection of the statute. So again, if we're going to look back at what prior county commissions have done, as far back as 1976, I think we can look back to this commission last year and requiring much more of Westover in respect of this threshold requirement than has been offered to this point today on this petition. The final aspect of the order that's been presented for your adoption includes a finding that annexation, quote, "could not be effectively accomplished under West Virginia Code Sections eight six two or eight six four." And here it gets very interesting. Because in this respect, Westover's pitch to this commission is utterly different from what was in the last petition. Unlike the last, the last time round, Westover candidly acknowledged, "We can't win an election, so that's not feasible, Section two." And we could never get the signatures contemplated under Section four. And I heard that essentially from Mr. Stranko orally today. But what's before you is an order that came in with this petition. This would have you adopt, I think, a very clear misinterpretation of Section eight six two. The first, I'm looking at the second paragraph of the order that Westover wishes for you to adopt today. And it reads as follows. "The proposed annexation could not be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished under West Virginia Code Section eight six two because the city of Westover has not received a petition from 5% of freeholders requesting such annexation. And the delivery of such a petition is not within the control of the governing body of Westover," end quote. Well, I'll acknowledge that it's not within the control of the governing body of Westover, whether citizens submitted a petition. But that sentence in the order that they want you to adopt is a little bit, or more than a little bit misleading because the 5% of the freeholders that's required under eight six two to trigger such an election, and by the way, $5,000 is a pittance compared to all the resources that have gone into this battle thus far. But what triggers that election? All they need are 5% of their own existing municipal residents under eight six two. And this will go to an election. Please understand that. The petitioning process under eight six two to trigger that public election and allow this to be done democratically doesn't even contemplate any participation by petition or otherwise by our clients. All they need to do to get this on a ballot and let people vote are a petition for 5% of their existing municipal citizens. The next sentence in the order that they've proffered for your adoption reads as follows. Quote, "The proposed annexation could not be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished under West Virginia Code Section eight six four because there are no qualified voters in the proposed annexation territory and a majority of freeholders of the proposed annexation territory have declined to file a petition for annexation pursuant to Section eight six four." That is clearly wrong. Under eight six four, qualified voters in subsection B has a very special meaning. And it can, and it does include the artificial entities who own our client's property. Two sentences in that second paragraph of the order they want you to adopt are clearly flawed and erroneous interpretations that they want you to adopt of the threshold requirements as they're mirrored, or they're adopted by reference to eight six two and eight six four. And I would, again, invite to your attention that that differs substantially from their apparent interpretation of eight six two and eight six four, and thus the threshold requirements in eight six five that they presented the last time around. I mentioned previously that I felt that the petition that has been presented, again, is very lightweight and conclusory in its assertions as to the other threshold requirements that are set forth in subsection C of eight six five. But I want to bring out a couple of them in particular. On the third, and again, on the fourth pages of the petition, Westover makes reference to the benefits that this incorporation would provide. And it includes in two places the following benefits. They make mention on page three of including wastewater and stormwater flows, end quote. And on page four, quote, "expanded water and sewer infrastructure service." Westover's ability and Westover's obligation as a public utility to provide services outside the municipal and corporate boundaries of Westover has been repeatedly and plainly established. The statute clearly allows them to do so. And they've had to be told twice by the Public Service Commission of West Virginia that they can't hold such utility service hostage to municipal annexation. That's the unfortunate proceeding that was, had to be brought by Mr. Portillo Pac that had us in this room over two years ago. It's mentioned in the letter that I submitted. The, the notion that anybody needs to be within Westover in order for Westover to provide public utility services is a canard. It's simply a false statement. They know it. They've been repeatedly told by the Public Service Commission. We realize that Westover would like for you to think that this is just a first step in the process. That we're just going to set this for public hearing. We would implore you not to adopt this order and not to take this any further today until there has been a final adjudication of Civil Action 13 double A one. Westover is farm shocking. Westover, we've, we have defeated the efforts of this municipal corporation to misuse and abuse eight six five twice. We don't think that we, or the other citizens who came out and took time out of their busy schedules and spoke to this county commission the last time around, should be put through yet a third round of this until the legally dispositive issues are resolved. If those are resolved in our favor, as we expect them to be, we can't guarantee a result, but we expect to prevail in that litigation, then Westover will have to finally go about doing this the right way. They'll have to either use eight six two, get 5% of their citizenry to sign a petition and put this up for a public vote, or they can use eight six four if they can persuade people on both sides of the existing corporate line that this is in the mutual best interest of Westover, its existing citizenry, and those who, like our clients, who simply want to remain good neighbors. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about our position. We do adopt all of our prior arguments from the, from rounds one and two, to the extent they still apply. But I don't think I need to go any further. I would be delighted, because some of this is pretty arcane stuff, to make sure that I've made my position plain to each and every one of you before you consider taking the vote. Our position, though, primary position, is that you take no vote today. You simply await the disposition of 13 double A one.
Okay, before we ask questions, since Mr. Stranko did not address that, do you want to address that?
I'd like to reply, if I can, Mr. President.
Yes, if you may. Please.
You can see it, Tim? Yes, thanks. You know, we, we all agree the statute's ambiguous and difficult to operate. And, you know, Mr. Melick's in the fortunate position of just exploiting that ambiguity to the disadvantage of Westover. And again, I will say, this commission has the authority, the ability, and in fact, the prerogative to resolve any ambiguities the way that you deem appropriate. Now, with regard to eight six two and eight six four, Mr. Melick, this is a key word in the, in the prerequisite. The question is whether, I don't know, you've read it so many times. The question is whether this could be accomplished by eight six two and eight six four. Now, now that is a ridiculous, frankly, section of the statute, but that's the question, whether it could be accomplished. What he's suggesting under eight six two election is we could begin the process. But as this commission knows, we've got to get a majority of votes from both the citizens of Westover, which we know will not be a problem, and a majority of votes from the freeholders and businesses in the annexed area. So the question, can it be accomplished by eight six two? The answer is no. Could it be begun? Could it be administered? Certainly, accomplished? That word is, is very clear. Accomplished means finished, and it means no. Now, the, the, I think, misstatement, and with respect, I would say, we need to be careful about this issue. The commission did not directly rule that this was not a minor boundary adjustment. Now, I say that with a caveat that I thought the instructions were, we weren't going to look backward. But let me just be clear on this. If it was not a minor boundary adjustment the last time we did this, before the prior commission, then why did the commission rule on all those specific aspects, finding then that the minor boundary adjustment was not in the best interest of the county? Obviously, that commission, Indicta, said in the opinion, maybe we don't, this might not be a minor boundary adjustment. But we conducted all those proceedings straight out of the statute. So it was, it was, in that commission's eyes, a minor boundary adjustment. But I say again, that doesn't matter. What matters is what this commission believes, whether this is a minor boundary adjustment or not. Now, Mr. Melick's protest with regards to pending civil case. Again, I say, this is a new application in front of a new commission. The mall or anybody else would be free to apply to Judge Fox or the Circuit Court for injunction to prevent this proceeding from going forward. We've not seen anything in that regard. We have a final order in that case. It's been now asked to be reconsidered by the mall. We've responded to that, and we expect a, a ruling. But that has nothing to do with what we're here for. What we're here for is to propose a minor boundary adjustment in front of the commission that was seated in January 2013. With regard to, there's, there's so much here that I want to address, but I don't want to belabor the points that were, I think, well put but inaccurate. With regard to service planning, I'm aghast that Mr. Melick would bring up the shameful letter that's in the record with regard to the Portillo Pac case. And I won't address that any further. You, you have our written response in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Stranko.
When we talk about services, we're not denying services. We're talking about sound municipal planning. We're talking about sound infrastructure planning. And if anybody here thinks that that mall has been developed soundly, look at Grandville. And look at the services and the, and the benefits of sound planning in a municipal environment. We're trying to open up South Dance Run. We're trying to make all this work together. We're trying to make all this work together for the benefit not just of our citizens but of the mall as well. They don't see that. They don't see that. There are neighbor disputes and the Patilipac case arose out of a dispute between him and the mall about services. There are disputes. There are inefficient uses of land up there. There's no planning to integrate that critical economic zone into the entire city. There's no planning to ensure that the infrastructure 10 years, 20 years, 30 years from now is what we need here in Montague County. So when we talk about services, we're talking about planning. We're talking about vision. And right now, the only vision I see out of the mall is we want to keep all the money we make for ourselves. He concluded by saying we want to be good neighbors. Good neighbors participate in the cost of civic life of the community. Good neighbors acknowledge that we are in part responsible for the cost of government, the cost of public life in Westover. And for the mall to come to you and say that, oh, minor boundary adjustments are only to adjust boundaries slightly, there's no law on that. That's their opinion. Your opinion is what matters. And I would say again, this is clearly a minor boundary adjustment. We've met the prerequisites and we ask for the commission to enter the order.
Anything else, Mr. Strank, before we start asking questions? Just address what?
Yes, I will address an omission. The finer points that I brought out in those first two sentences in the second paragraph with the misconstructions of 862 and 864, which are new and novel, unlike those that they've tried to use before, that was not addressed just now. And if nothing else, you need to be very careful about the form of any such order. I don't think you want to adopt an order that has two plainly erroneous legal constructions in it. You might seek Mr. Maygrove's or someone else's counsel on that. Again, there'll be time for that if you grant a primary request, which is just to hold this in abeyance until we can vindicate our rights as participants for years in a series of these things. I don't think it's fair appropriate to serially petition with taxpayer money and expect private citizens of Montague County to have to muster the resources necessary to defend themselves. If there's a disposition of this, as we expect there to be on round two, that will save everybody round three.
Well, I'll be, I'll be asked, Mr. Strank, directly, sir. Would it create any difficulty to table this until he rules on that last motion they filed for the town? I mean, would you voluntarily do that to, so the?
Questions.
Well, I know, but you were his representative, so I'm talking to you, sir. You know that, I give you that respect.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that, and I will ask the mayor to respond.
Well, I don't think that the mall has simply reopened a case that the judge has already ruled on, and I don't see where it has anything to do with our application for you today.
Well, that's not my question.
I know what your question is.
We are not disadvantaged, Mr. President. I agree with the mayor's absolutely right, and as I've said in my remarks, that case has nothing to do with this case. This is a new commission.
I understand, but I just wanted to say.
I expect a judge's voice momentarily, Mr. President. I'm sorry for talking over you. I expect an order from Judge Fox momentarily, so if the commission chooses to table this, there would be no great delay. I don't expect.
Thank you, Mr. Strank. You got a question?
Yeah, I'm not in favor of table this issue, and I think in order to table it, we would need a motion and it would have to pass at least with a majority. It can't be tabled unless that happens.
Mr. Strank, I couldn't voluntarily?
I, it's before the commission. It's on our official agenda. The presentation has been made, and I think at this point in time, it's in our hands. We're here now at this stage of it to ask questions. So the presentation has already been made and it's appropriate for us to vote on this matter. That's why we have it on our official agenda, to try to divert this matter, delay, and I hate to even get into historic because I was hoping that we wouldn't, but we did, like it was in the past. I'm not in favor of it. This issue drug on for months and months and months. This issue needs addressed. It needs addressed properly and it needs to be expedited so that we don't linger and create media issues, create all kinds of conflicts over this issue. One of the things that we got to the questions, and I guess, Mr. Melick, I have a question for you, is that you talked about prior commissions, and I was on a prior commission and I didn't vote for it. I mean, I didn't vote to deny it. I voted to approve it. So when you talk about prior commissions, you need to make sure that you clarify it was a two-one vote.
I so clarified.
The second thing is that I noticed in your presentation that you used, talked about the prior commission's disapproving the request, which was entirely appropriate. However, you failed to talk about, and I think Mr. Strank alluded to it, the prior commission's approved this application and forwarded it to a public hearing. So on one hand, if prior commissions were correct in disapproving the annexation, were they incorrect in forwarding it to a public hearing?
There would be, under the logic of that order, Commissioner Bartolo, because that issue of the threshold that is minor boundary adjustment has never been ruled upon, the commission, the prior commission determined that it would go ahead and conduct the public hearing on the statutory, the subsequent portion of the statute, but in its final order, which is quite lengthy and will speak for itself, there was a finding expressed that it didn't, now I'm now thinking this through, this wasn't even a minor boundary adjustment. So if that is true, then this one doesn't get across the threshold.
I have no more questions.
Do you have any question?
I guess my question is, the process we're going to go through, are we going to ask some questions, discuss it, and then vote on it? Or are we going to have to have a first and second and then discuss it? I want just a clarification on?
No, we can discuss it before, however you want to do it.
Okay, since we're discussing now, that'd be fine with me. Okay, that's fine.
Did you ask questions?
Okay. I was taking notes for both of you, which is good and bad. I know there's a lot riding on this. This decision is not only going to affect the Westover and the county, but I'm sure other cities are watching down the road what may happen, and that I'm concerned about. I'll be point blank about that. However, that's not what's before me today, and I think, Mr. Bartolo, you actually just concluded what I think I'm going to do on your last statement. The concern before us right now is, you would ask, is it a new proposal? Well, it is a new proposal because I'm new. I mean, whether legally, one way or the other, it is a new proposal before the county commission right now that I'm hearing for the first time. So I believe this is a new proposal. I don't care what has happened in the past, and it was very clearly made by the judge in the order that any proposal that would actually come before the county commission can only be, what materials brought up in front of them at that time will be discussed. So the only thing I am looking at right now is, is this correct and legally done as a petition for a minor boundary adjustment? And my concern is that nowhere in the state legislature doesn't define what the standard is of a size of what a minor boundary is. And I don't like, I think we're all concerned about that. However, that's not what I'm here for today. Today, I am here for, in my opinion, the discussion of the petition for a minor boundary adjustment, and that's all we're going to vote on at this time, whether I'm accepting that minor boundary adjustment. And I can see your mind going a mile a minute, so go right ahead.
Thank you. They are asking you to find that this is a minor boundary adjustment. Not every word in the law has to have a definition. We know what up means. We know what down means. We know what a boundary is. We know what a minor adjustment to a boundary is. So you are indeed being asked to put our clients through another round of this. You are indeed being asked to find that this does contemplate a minor boundary adjustment. So the suggestion that your hands are tied and you're not allowed to reflect on that, I would respectfully dispute that.
Okay.
We believe that we have the right to due process and that you would need to make a finding that this was a minor boundary adjustment, just as you would have to make what are the clearly erroneous findings in the order that's been presented to you, the misconstructions of both Section 2 and Section 4. All of these are at the threshold, and they require something more than just signing off on something Westover hands to you, I would respectfully suggest. And you've had legal counsel who's become quite conversant in all of these matters, who's representing you in the pending civil action, where we, in our answer to the complaint filed by Westover to seek review, judicial review of the last decision, specifically averred that the court should make a finding that this was not a minor boundary adjustment, that puts an end to everything. They've been trying to get this property into Westover for decades. To let that litigation resolve over the course of the next several months, if it takes that long, is not an undue hardship on Westover. It will spare a tremendous hardship to Mr. Brandon, the businesses he's responsible to run, and the tenants, the little people who rent some of that space and try to run those businesses in that mall, many of whom appeared before this county commission during round two. I don't know why you would want to put everyone through that. And I do believe it's within your discretion to take under advisement any requests, because this matter's on your agenda today, it's not me that requires a vote.
Okay, and you made it very clear that we would put them through it again, and that's incorrect. Two of the members would. I'm not, and I want to be very honest. This, I don't care what's happened in the past. My question is before me right now, does this meet the standards as a county commissioner that I believe it's a minor boundary adjustment and then put into a, have a public hearing? And that's what I'm trying to decide on. And so I want it real clear, you keep talking about the past. I'm not part of the past, and I was no, I'm not privy to that, okay? So my question is, I have to decide, is it a new petition? And I'll be very honest, to me it is. Do I believe that the citizens of both sides should hear the arguments and then we make a decision? At this time, I see nothing that says that I shouldn't, in any which way, make that decision. But I want to say something right now, and again, this will probably get me in trouble, but I'm used to getting in trouble, but I want to say publicly right now that I am not going to approve, and again, it's not you or you, but I want both sides to realize, that I'm not going to allow any, quote, "character assassination" or threats to make a decision for what I have to decide. And I want that very clear. And again, I've already reported that of the situation that's happened before to the sheriff's department, and what I'm going to do is make a decision like the other two county commissioners that will come before us and make the best decision possible for the citizens of the county. So again, as much as I keep hearing that it's a rehash the third or fourth or fifth time, to me, I still don't see where it doesn't meet the standards of having a petition at this time to be looked at now. How I'm going to vote, I have no idea. I want to hear the data, but I believe I have that right and I believe I should hear that data. So that's my.
Can I accept that as a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
Because other things that are being presented to you in this very order they want you to sign today that are more than just finding this is a minor boundary adjustment, you would also have to make the other threshold determinations. And the first two sentences in that second paragraph of their petition express erroneous constructions of both of those thresholds.
Are you saying the proposed annexation could not be efficiently and cost-effectively? Is that the comment that you were referring to?
That's one of them, and the other one is this plainly erroneous construction of 864 that says there are no qualified voters in the proposed annexation territory. That's simply wrong. If you look at 864 subsection B, it says for purposes of this section, and I'll read it to you. For purposes of this section, the term, quote, "qualified voter of the additional territory", quote, includes firms and corporations in the additional territory. So to suggest that you can't, they can't go under 864 because there aren't any people who reside in the targeted territory is flatly contradicted by the statute. What they've presented to you is just law that's beyond the minor boundary adjustment, beyond the minor boundary adjustment. The other threshold requirements, they are misleading you. They would have you adopt an order that is an absolute misconception of the statutes, and I would urge you respectfully to seek the counsel of Mr. Maygrove or whoever you wish before you would adopt such an order.
Okay, before you said, can I ask a question to respond to that? You stated in 86-2, the word that was missing, whether it could be accomplished. Now, the question I want to ask and then you can respond is, does it have to be accomplished by, can you choose one of the three options of?
I'm not sure. I'm so distracted right now by his accusation, I'm misleading this commission. Yet again, yet again, if you've got no law, if you've got an ambiguous statute, you're going to read it the way that favors your client. I'm reading it the way it favors people of Westover. You've got to decide how to read the statute. I'm not going to presume to tell you how to read English, as Mr. Maygrove, as Mr. Melick apparently is. It is quite simple. The statute's ambiguous and where that ambiguity exists, you're allowed to resolve.
Okay, my question is, there's three different methods of annexation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Under 86-2, you stated whether it could be accomplished, and you're using this method of a minor boundary. Does the law state that you have to choose one over another, or can you all choose this one?
The law states that we must make a finding that we cannot effectively or efficiently, I forget what the?
Cost-effectively or efficiently.
Cost-effectively or efficiently, thank you, Mr. President, accomplishes under the other two options. And the city council of Westover made a finding that they could not cost-effectively or efficiently accomplish this under those two options, and that's why they're coming to you for minor boundary adjustment. Is that simple?
Will you address that point at some point?
Yes, Mr. Bloom.
Okay, say.
President, I want an instruction here. An accusation I'm misleading this forum or the city of Westover somehow being disingenuous is just beyond the pale, and I want, yet again, another instruction, we're not going to do this kind of foolishness.
Well, let's put it this way. Let's talk about the issue and not about the personalities.
I didn't mention any much personality.
All right, well, or the individual.
Nor did I mention any individual here.
All right, well, I'm going to make that a rule. I don't want to hear it. If you hear it, raise your hand and I'll smack the gavel. I'm good at that. Okay. Mr. Bloom?
Yeah, I'm trying to relate it, and I guess I'm going to relate it to my specific case of, the question is, there is, my personal case with the school system, is there's a rule. It's very ambiguous, and it's being interpreted two different ways, which I am hearing today. Does each side have the right to interpret it their way, whether I like one way or the another? And I believe that's what is before me in the biggest decision, and that's why I believe does it meet petition for a new minor boundary adjustment to be accepted and then we hear it, and that's, whether you like or not, that is how I feel. I feel at this time that it meets the standards to be heard and accepted, and then we have then the actual hearing, and then I will be able to hear the specifics. And I believe that's all I'm, I am supposed to rule on today, and that's how I have interpreted, and that's why I wanted to make very clear that the last time, we only accepted it, I wanted to hear. I've not heard any merits that says that it does not meet those standards, and as a county commissioner, that is the way I feel at this time.
May I please speak to that issue?
Sure.
Again, the order that's been presented for your execution adopts a finding that it should not be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished under 862. Any fair reading of these statutes in perimateria, which just means as a whole, will tell you, and this buttresses our construction of minor boundary adjustment by the way, that independent of that, this is the least of the three preferred methods. And if the construction is 862 isn't feasible because we'd lose the election, then the exception consumes the rule. That is the most anti-democratic construction of that phrase I can imagine. We can do this this way because if the will of the people is otherwise, we can, we'll still be able to do it. How can that be a correct application of this law? The reason those words are in that statute is if it indeed is a minor. The reason those words are in that statute is if it indeed is a minor boundary adjustment. If we need to just scooch out a parcel boundary, a municipal boundary that conform to a parcel boundary, or to newly installed hallway, highway, or some other particular reason that any normal speaker of English would derive from the phrase minor boundary adjustment, that's when a $5,000 election makes, it seems inefficient. Why go through all of that when we can use, just make a minor adjustment to this boundary? This is an unprecedented abuse of this statute, and we respectfully ask you to take no action. If you decide, if you want to take an action today, obviously our vote would be no, that it doesn't satisfy the threshold requirements. The order that's before you has some just plain long interpretation to the statute. All we're asking you to do is wait to be enlightened by pending adjudication that Westover instituted, that we chose to continue participating in, and in our responsive pleading have asked the circuit court to resolve. This requires some clarity, and it'll have some clarity if that is fully and fairly litigated. I can answer any other questions you have.
Well, if I could just respond to that, and I agree with you, it may be the least of the three preferable methods, but it is one of the methods that the state allows this county commission to look at. And whether it may, I don't believe it's not democratic or anti-democratic, but it's part of the state, one of the three methods, and the state allows us to look at that, and I think it meets the standards. We may not like it, but that's part of the law, and that's why I want to hear more about this when we have our hearing.
Only if it, only if it cannot be accomplished fairly and effectively, efficiently rather, under either the other preferred methods.
Mr. President, I think we're repetitively covering issues over and over and over. What I would, what I'd like to entertain at this point is I'd like to give you the opportunity, Mr. President, to ask you questions, because I'm ready to make a motion.
Tom, did you have anything?
Uh, no, I, no, but I do, would like to say, and I agree with the president, that when we move forward, if that's the vote, I say when, if the vote goes that way, that we try and keep it civil and work on the actual issues, and we may even set some boundaries up what we want to do if that goes forward, but, you know, I do not want to get into a personal assassination attack on either side, because that, no one wins from that. So I want to work on the issues, and that's, that's just what I would like to say. I believe that sometimes we're getting offshoot of what, why we're actually here. Thank you, I'm done.
I'm going to ask you the big question. You didn't have an answer the last time, but, well, that's not fair, I don't mean you didn't have an answer, you didn't have an answer that I found acceptable. I've got to be fair to you. Neither one of you did, I'm talking about both of you. And that question relates to what standard do I apply? Because it's important to me, as I said the last time, that I treat Westover, do I treat Morgantown, I treat Branville, I treat Blacksville, the same way. And the only way I can do that, I can be assured of that, and not break down into political gamesmanship, is to have a standard that I can apply to any other town. I threw out examples last time, and do we compare acreage to acreage? Do we compare people to people? Do we compare budgets to, the effect on the budget? What is it? And I don't want to talk about the last thing, but I want to get the record straight. I don't want to talk about the last order because it's not in front of us. I think it speaks very clearly for itself. But I wrote it, so I know exactly what's in it. It said specifically that we proceeded without making a determination on a boundary adjustment because we believed that it would just create an appeal that would then delay everyone and then bring everyone back if the court defined, and we deferred judgment. And there was a specific finding that it was not a minor boundary adjustment, that's what the order said. I don't want to rehash that, and I don't, you know, I'm just saying, I just want to get the record straight on what the order said. But my question is still, and I hope you all came up with an answer I can accept, this time I'm excited. What standard can I apply, that will apply to Charleston, to Huntington, to Berkeley County?
Mr. President, I responded in a way that I think may disappoint you, but I think I said this before, the standard is fairly simple, and it's a standard I believe this commission applies to all of its work, which is what is in the best interest of Monongate County today and in the future. That's the standard. That's the simple standard.
Thank you, sir.
I very much and respectfully dispute that. That's one of the seven factors that's buried in a subsequent subsection of the statute. We're at the threshold, and if you allow this to go forward as a minor boundary adjustment with the findings that they've asked you to express in the order they've presented, then it's Katy bar the door. Anybody and everybody has to be subject to the same sort of process, or it is not fair. So, this is now policy, this is a little beyond, but that question, I think it informs an appropriate judgment. You shouldn't be blind about this, about the ramifications. If you adopt this order today, then there is no reason that you could or should deny similar application from another municipal corporation in Mon County that wants to target another 100 acre or so established taxpaying commercial enterprise. The rhetoric we hear is, these are out-of-state people. You certainly can't be constitutionally...
Wait, wait, and I didn't answer that question.
Right.
Thank you.
But that's what it comes down to.
But, but, I just want to answer the question. And basically, I'm not satisfied with either one of them.
I'd like to satisfy, President Callen, because that, I want to be clear, this, it's all up to you is Westover's position. And so if you, if you do this today to our clients, you'll have to do it again the next time somebody comes in with a similar proposal.
Can I just address that?
Yes, you may, since you went off a little bit.
This proposal is here in front of you. What happens next, what happens in the future is not germane to these...
Yeah, I understand that, Mr. Stranko. I can sort of distinguish between the answer to my question and additional stuff. One other, one other thing that Commissioner Bloom brought up, which was, is significant, is what we are doing here today is upon receipt of complete application, and I understand that Mr. Melick for the mall is contesting that it's not a complete application because it doesn't have many things that were in it the last time, understanding that, I'm not asking that question. Application for annexation, the county commission shall determine whether the application meets the threshold requirements for consideration as a minor boundary adjustment. So even though we deferred it the last time, we are sitting here charged with deciding whether this is a minor boundary adjustment, including whether the annexation could be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished. The accomplished is not in there. Could be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished under section two. The question is, as Mr. Bloom asked before, whether the annexation decision could be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished. If it can't be, if it can't be accomplished, if that's the way it's interpreted, efficiently and cost-effectively is irrelevant. It's hyperbole, it doesn't mean anything, it's just extra words in there. It's poorly written. You've got to have the word "decision" in there for efficiently and cost-effectively to have any meaning whatsoever. And that, and that really, really troubles me, and, you know, we're not talking about this, but I talked to the legislature about it, and they're scared to death of this. They're scared to death of it. They've washed their hands of it, they're like Pontius Pilate, standing there saying, you know, "Don't crucify everybody because we're afraid of the debate that's going to take place in this statute." And I think we, I see all three, three of us shaking heads. As attorneys, we know how poorly this is written. Did you want to...
Just to that point, I want to make sure, I think I expressed this, but in a stream of some other things, I think the interpretation of the boundary just called out has to mean the process, not the outcome, because it's not preordained.
Well, our findings efficient, cost-effectively, doesn't mean anything, if it doesn't include decision.
It has to speak only to the process, irrelevant to the efficiency of the process.
Yeah, okay, I know that. Mr. Stranko, do you have anything for... Okay, Mr. Bartolo.
Well, I'm trying to make this brief, but I need to make some comments before I make this motion. And that is, we started out with me requesting that we stick to these points with this application, and we got off track, in my opinion. We talked about things of the past, we talked about trying to use things of the past as guidance for the future, we talked about the legislature, we talked about court orders, we talked about participating in, or waiting to participate, whether you're an active participant or a passive participant, you're still a participant if we wait for a court order that may or may not stop this request for annexation. I think we're beyond that point. It's, I don't think that any commissioner here would, would take the position that we want to participate in the court's action. In fact, we passed a motion the last meeting that Mr. Magro not participate in more than what was required by law in terms of this prior action. Mr. Melick, you've gave us some information, and some of that information, I think if you look at the record, is not real accurate. There was only eight people, merchants, that showed up from the mall of 80 merchants. I think if you look at the minutes of the public hearing, you'll find it wasn't many people, it was about 10% of the merchants. In fact, Mr. Melick, I asked a question the last time, are you representing the merchants? And the mall's position was no, they're representing themselves. So I think one of the things that happens when you reflect upon the past, whether it's accidental, whether time contributes to inaccuracies, that's one of the things that I think Mr. Bloom doesn't really want to deal with, and shouldn't have to deal with. He wasn't there, this is a new proceeding. One of the things that we have to do is, we have to accept some credibility. The statute 865-7 provides that Westover provide a statement of proposed annexation meets the requirements of this section. They've done that. Now, if we're going to hold a court of law to try their integrity, that's one thing, but we're not, that's not our purpose. Our purpose here today is, does this meet the threshold requirements? And I guess that means to get across the doorstep, which two prior commissions have done. That this should go on to the real decision makers, and I think Mr. Stranko hit the nail on the head, the real decision makers in this whole issue is the public. And that's why the next step in this process is a public hearing. In fact, if you reflect back on the court orders, you will find that Judge Gajo put in his court orders that we should not accept any evidence unless it comes through the proper form of the public hearing. So it would seem to me that if we're going to let the right people make their decision, or at least provide the evidence to make that decision, then we need to go to a public hearing. We need to let the people come out, both pro and con, and then based upon the evidence that's introduced during that public hearing, make our decision whether this annexation should be approved or disapproved. So therefore, I would refer to 86E. If the application meets the threshold requirements, county commission should order publication of a notice, proposed annexation to corporate limits, and other date and time set by the commission for a hearing on the proposal. Publication shall be as in the case of an order calling for an election as set forth in section two, 862 of this article. A light notice shall be promptly posted in not less than five public places within the area proposed. I would like that to be part of my motion, and I would therefore put that on the table as a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Any comments?
He seconded.
Well, no. Ask him if he had any comment.
I'll wait till after the vote.
We had a compelling reason. I disagree with, with, I believe by Fox's ruling, Gajo's quarter means nothing. I really do. I really do. Means nothing. It threw it out. We went through the process, trying to determine whether this was a minor boundary adjustment, and we deferred it. The annexation decision can efficiently and cost-effectively be done against either two or four. It can be done. If you leave deficient, efficiently, or decision out of there efficiently and cost-effective means zilch, zero, nothing. And as we know, the law says you must give effect to every word in a statute. I do not believe that there's an acceptable standard that this is a boundary, or that it's minor. It's not adjusting a boundary, it's taking a huge chunk of land. The acreage that was referred to here was along a highway. It was not, it was along a highway that we referred to the 600 acres. And that was through a valley, and that's what justified it as minor, because it was a boundary along a particular highway. This does not meet the standard of a minor boundary adjustment, and we did not find that it met a standard the last time, and I still do not see it as a minor boundary adjustment. So I'm opposed to it. I've got a motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote no. Motion passed.
Thank you.
We have a question of process.
You may have a question of process, yes, sir. You can speak, excuse me, you can speak toward public comment, sir.
When, when would you anticipate the entry of a formal order to adopt the vote you just had?
Probably just as soon as we fill in the necessary information.
I'd like to get a copy that expeditiously if I could. Should I contact Ms. Medici's office?
Yes, she's the one, she's the one to contact.
Thank you again for your time.
The other thing in relationship to this matter is that I would also like to pursue setting of the date for the public hearing. I think the attorneys involved, if there's, I personally would like to see it expedited as soon as it meets the requirements of the code. So if you get with maybe Diane and your schedules and see how that is, and at the earliest possible date that we can give a schedule.
You asked for a public hearing?
Yes.
I would appreciate, I think, so that more people could attend, I'd like one meeting seven o'clock in the evening and have it...
Well, that's what we did the last time, we did 10:00 in the morning and 7:00. Can we, can we set that up?
I would rather just have one meeting. I'd rather have one meeting, and again, this is my recommendation, again, that besides the two parties give ample time, whatever that ample time is, to explain the positions, I believe we should start limiting, you know, three minutes to a person, to only specific that issue, because I believe we need to relate to just the issue, and any other information could be handed to the three of us in documentation form. That's what I would like to recommend. So I believe it'd be more efficient, rather than having people come in both times, you know, because some people may not hear the discussion of the morning and the evening. So I'd like it just, my recommendation is just one evening to do that.
At least it was, it was my experience that we had some repetition.
That's what I would think would happen.
I would think that probably a public hearing is best, best serves the public by it being in the evening.
And I like the evening because that way, most people aren't working.
So you don't want to do both?
No, I would like just one evening, I don't care how long it goes. No, I would like just one evening. I don't care how long it goes.
We did both, and actually, they didn't make a second presentation. I think they just talked briefly and referenced the first one. But if, will the commission just have one evening?
I'd appreciate that.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. I think it just makes more sense that everyone be there, and hopefully, if we have, and again, I want to thank West TV, because hopefully, they'll be there too, so everyone can see all the information.
The other thing is that we need, the terms of the time of the hearing will be seven o'clock.
Yes, that's what, yeah.
And the location of the hearing, sheriff, if we can impose upon your fine training room over there for the public hearing.
Do you have the training room, or do you have the floor?
Well, the big room.
Yes. And then you could work out it.
Then work out the exact date, Diane, with the attorneys and.
Yes, that's all I would ask.
With the parties, so that we.
That would be good.
Yeah, that'd be, that's all I was going to ask.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Stranko, mayor. We appreciate your presence. Mr. Malik?
Yeah.
No, I appreciate you. Okay, great, Correspondents, Greater Paw Paw PSD, enlarging PSD service area.
Okay, we discussed this issue earlier. The Little Creek Public Service District wishes to extend water lines to, actually, twelve new homes. This has been debated, because of a minor, a minor water limitation boundary back in nineteen ninety-two. So I do have a wider Clinton Water Association agreeing to this, and they're already at Little Creek. Your approval is voted the Federal Service Commission.
Now, are you talking about Clinton Water? I was talking about Greater Paw Paw PSD. The Correspondents.
Sorry.
Greater Paw Paw PSD enlarging the PSD service area, that's to take in Crown.
PSD, yes. This is to notify you that a public hearing is being held, actually, next Wednesday, in Marion County, at ten thirty, to discuss this. This would allow them to service the Crown area that you've been working on for quite a year, to serve to them. So if you don't have any objections, we can send a lot of support at that time.
Sure. Yeah, that, that's just an expansion of the Paw Paw.
Do we need a new motion on that?
Yes.
A move that we send a lot of support.
Second.
Have a motion, second on, in favor, say aye. Aye.
Oh, aye.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, Hartman Run Bridge. Bobby, what do we got?
Well, we're right over the, from, it was A Com who did our inspection for us, and we still have the free time weight movement at ten place. And there was some recommendations on cutting some brush away from it and stuff, and we'll be able to do that. As the other stuff that they recommended, we cannot do that sort of work.
I reviewed the report. Basically, it's still safe, even though the condition is poor. Structurally, it's sound and safe to operate. The, it had various things from tidying bolts to, I saw your guys over there the other day, taking care of shrubs and stuff like that. They, they also, there was one section, they also asked that we observe, should look at it like once every quarter. It should be looked at, and I think, Bobby, you agree that maybe you should photograph.
I can look at it.
You can look at it.
It's not a problem.
Yes.
Me neither.
So, and, and what, and basically, some of the things can't be done without estimate, but, but it appears that they're saying the cost of replacement will be about the same as cost of fixing. And they, I, I don't like the idea of paying this inflated one million dollars. But I would, I would ask each of the commissioners to think about that, now that we look at, look, look at our budget, we've been doing very good on our budget watching it, that we just send the Department of Highways a letter saying, "Look, you want a million bucks? Here's a check for a million bucks. On the day you get the check for a million bucks, you take title to the bridge, it's yours. We're done with it." I think, as a counterproposal to their last statement. That, that's just an idea of, I don't like giving that extra six hundred thousand, but the situation's only going to get worse.
How about a little different version?
Okay, more diplomatic?
Well, I think we do need to get it resolved. And I totally agree with you that that issue's drug on for too long. And, and what I'm concerned about is that we're going to drag it on so long that we're going to have some fatalities because of that bridge, and then it's going to be too late to address it. What I'd like to suggest as an alternative is that we send them a letter, and we say, "Okay, look, we will send you five hundred thousand dollars now. And when the city of Morgantown pays us our four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in two thousand fourteen, we will, we will pay the balance of the other five hundred thousand dollars for a total of one million dollars. But to consummate this agreement, we want you to take immediate possession of the bridge."
I like that, too.
As a sign of good faith, that, that if they do the same thing as they did the last time, when this county, not this, these commissioners, but this county commission obligated four hundred thousand dollars, and they failed to replace the bridge, and now it's up to a million, should they decide to wait again, and the costs go up to two million, that we don't shoulder that burden, that the bridge is theirs for keeps forever and ever. And I think we clearly demonstrate, "Look, we've had enough of this bridge. Let's make it a safe one. Let's get the issue off the table." And the other thing is, I think we need to let the state know that, we know that eighty percent of the cost of replacing this bridge is coming from federal funds. So there is no money coming out of the state's pocket.
None, that's right.
The twenty percent that we're putting up comes out of the county taxpayers' pocket. So, so the federal government and the county's the ones that's really paying for the replacement of the bridge, not the state. But the state has to obligate their efforts in getting this bridge replaced, and the ownership maintenance thereafter. That's.
I, I like the, Tom, you have any comments?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I, I was going to come up with a third idea.
A third one, go ahead.
But, but, well, I kind of like your idea in a way. I mean, I wanted this, since I've not been privy before to the situation, did we actually get an actual statement that said it's going to cost, they want one million dollars from us? Did we get, actually get?
Well, no, that's not what it said. I, I can answer that question.
Right.
What it said was, that the estimate, in two thousand three, we offered the four hundred thousand, which was represented the twenty percent. They didn't do anything, as Commissioner Bartolo said. They did nothing. A couple years ago, they said, "Now the cost is five million plus. So it's going to be like nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, but we won't take ownership of the bridge until all the work's completed, and we have no idea when the work's going to be completed. And we will bill you from the difference of your deposit of nine hundred and some thousand, and whatever the true twenty percent is." So it could have been a million five. We don't know. But that's, that was their last offer. Is that not correct?
Okay. See, what worries me is this is just going to escalate. And, and, yeah, it has. And I believe we, and I agree with, I like your idea, that we need to put a, some sort of a stipulation that they take it over immediately. I, I have, I, I'll be honest with you, I do not want to give a million, a million dollars, and I, I've stated that to two of you.
I know.
However, I would, yeah, some, some way of using what you're saying is, I'm more than willing to take five hundred thousand to put in a line item, separate out immediately. Send them a letter saying, "I, I want to see an actual letter that says how much money they really think," because now what happens if they come back saying, "Now we want one point two, one point four million." So I'm very, very concerned.
But they can't do that if they take ownership. They don't get one penny unless they take ownership.
Okay.
We're not obligated. That's what's, what's beauty about, about this. We both wanted the, the end result, end result is they take ownership. So they can come back. They accept the one million dollars, they take ownership of the bridge, we're done with it. It's their problem. So if they can fix it, and it would only cost us eight hundred thousand, I'm fine with giving the extra two hundred thousand. If they, if they, if it costs a lot more than that, we haven't given them any more than a million.
See, my concern, though, is we give them the money, and then they don't deal with it for five years, for six years.
That's their problem.
That's why we need the commitment that they take immediate possession of ownership.
Okay. So that, that is my, okay, that is, okay, that is my concern. Wow, a million dollars. I mean, that's taxpayer dollars. It just irritates me.
But you got to remember, that's, from the standpoint of potential liability, is a very small measure.
Right, you're right.
If that bridge collapses. Now, we don't have any indication at this point that it's ready to collapse, with the weight limit of three thousand pounds.
Right, it's safe right now. I mean, we need to get that clear.
Free time.
That if someone was on that bridge over three thousand pounds, that it won't collapse.
Yeah.
It's three tons.
Three tons.
Three tons.
Okay. So what you're basically saying is, you want to put five hundred thousand, you want to put five hundred thousand, on the basis that we send a certified letter, since they're never responding back to us, a certified letter that would say that we will put five hundred thousand initially from this budget, immediately, with another four hundred, yeah, coming in, within probably the next year.
January fourteen.
Only on the basis if they immediately take over the bridge, I, because I want to get this clear, and then we are basically at liabilities.
It's, it's their brick.
Okay.
The other, the other point I think we ought to do is, is that when this letter's sent out, we ought to send a copy to our.
Legislators.
US representatives.
Okay.
Because, as I understand it, if my memory is certainly correct, is President Obama established some money for a bridge replacement infrastructure. So the federal funding should be available for that. So it shouldn't be anything out of the state's pocket. They should be able to go to the, the federal government and get the resources to get that bridge replaced.
I, I, I agree. Can we convert, how you're outlined into a motion?
Yeah. I would move that we send a letter with copies to our elected representatives, proposing to the state that we will agree to pay one million dollars towards the construction of a new bridge, new Hartman Run Bridge. Five hundred thousand of that will be paid immediately. The other five hundred thousand dollars will be paid in two thousand fourteen, and the city of Morgantown repays our loan to them. However, we would expect immediate ownership to be taken by the state of West Virginia.
On acceptance of the first.
On acceptance of the first amendment.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, second on, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you. Now, Clinton Water Association, Little Indian Creek PSD.
Please repeat my sentence.
Please.
This is a, a development that previously was serviced by Little Creek Public Service District, because they had permission to cross over the Mon County boundary. This is adding twelve new homes to the service line. The district was modified in nineteen ninety-two. The Clinton Water Association and Little Creek Public Service District both agreed that they will provide this service, and this will also have to be approved by the Public Service Commission. There are no expenses on the part of the county. The developers are bearing the cost of the project.
Was there not some question, or is this the same project, about the number of fire hydrants they're putting in there? Or is this just, is this just a?
Blowing the commit.
What line?
Yeah.
Mr. Hirschman is here, if you'd like.
Oh, okay. Come on in.
There was no question about it. I have one hydrant there, but there was no question about it.
Okay, there, there was, thank you. So, so there was no, no question?
No.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion, in the second on, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We got it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, Mub right-of-way agreement. That's down underneath the PRT in Evansdale.
Yes.
Please.
My request from Mub, or the commission, who described it as approximately a four-foot water line.
Apparently, we have, the county owns a strip of land running from, around the Old Raleigh Lane, from the Evansdale, the, is it Evansdale Street, Twin Towers on, down to behind Crowlers. And the Mub needs a right-of-way approval from us to cross that strip of land. We can't build on it or anything.
Right. Move for approval, yes. Second.
We have a motion, and a second on, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, new business. Policy statement pertaining to fill in vacancies of certain elected officials. This, the, this, the, the law changed about how you fill vacancies and how quickly you have to fill vacancies and all. And this is not anything original by me. Actually, it was a policy to implement, I, I think gave the other commissioners a copy.
Yes.
It was, it was a policy designed and adopted by Canola County. But what it does, it, it actually is a policy statement that makes public and, and, and affects the change in the statute of how county commissions are to fill vacancies. And I, I asked Diane to make a copy of it on ours, because I thought it was a good policy as written, and that we ought to adopt it, so that all elected officials and the public knows if, in the event of a vacancy, the process will be followed into fill.
A move for approval. I think it's a good idea.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second on, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, we'll bring up that other issue in work session, Diane.
I'm sorry, sir.
No, about the, well, I'll talk about it. It's not relevant right now. Discussion of joint governments meeting, this is something that I've been talking about, we kicked around in the work session. And Tom, he just, as he does, he jumped on it, and he started running with it, and I've been trying to hold up with, and keep up with him.
I'm very excited, and I'm very excited.
Go ahead, Tom.
I'm very excited that the three county commissioners have all agreed. One of our concerns is that we don't talk enough to the other legislative bodies. So what we have proposed is a meeting in September that, we'll see which date that might work, that the cities of Blacksville, Westover, Morgantown, Grahamville, we did say.
Star City.
Star City. And I think, did we say WVU? We agreed to have WVU?
We thought maybe in the second one.
Okay, second.
We had our initial one.
Just.
Just our local government.
Just our local governments to meet and discuss mutual interests, and to see what kind of issues and concerns we could discuss, possibly work on some solutions together. And that is exactly what, I'm, I'm thrilled that the three county commissioners have all agreed to this, and we're working on a date. Diane, had we come up with a possible? We were looking at, in September, right? Sometime in September. And such issues, people said, like, what could be, issues could be such things as EMS, fire, I mean, there's a number, the homeless, the, we were coming up with different ideas. And then what I would propose is, every two or three months, then a city, we would start it, and then, and then a city would have, host it, and we'd move around and discuss issues, even if it could be like mutual buying materials for paving of roads or something like that. But I believe we have enough issues now that we need to start working together. And I think we're all in agreement on that. And I believe in the long run, I think that's what the county should be doing. So, I'll see what other ideas, any suggestions?
I think it's certainly worth exploring. And it should give us insight in terms of what areas do exist that we might be able to do some sharing of resources.
Right.
But I think it's a great idea.
Okay, I don't think we need to do anything on it. We're going to pass a motion, or go ahead and set it up, or what?
Move that we continue the progress to have joint government meetings.
Second.
I have a motion, and a second on, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got you at seven PM, Sheriff's.
I'd like to do the seven PM, the first time.
Yeah.
And we have to look at what dates that all the cities don't meet, so we can find a date that.
Find the right date.
I mean, let me just throw this, I'm not sure how you feel about this, but I think it might do well to open it to the public if we hold it again, impose upon the sheriff in his facilities, to open it up to the public to observe the process.
Yeah. What, what we were thinking was having like some sort of a rectangle where everyone was equal, and then the public would sit so people could. and then the public would sit so people could...
Right.
Come, yeah.
Hexagon.
Yeah, however you want to work.
It has to be a hexagon.
Yeah.
Six elements.
Okay.
Okay. That'll be good. Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Commissioner Bartola, Bill?
I got a call from, uh, was it Howlick Senior Center? Lena Powell. And I think she may have called each of you. I don't know if she did or not, but...
Yes.
Uh, just for the record, we got invited to their meeting as their guests on August the nineteenth at six PM. They usually request a covered dish, but since we are invited guests, we don't have to bring any food.
Boy, they know my cooking.
We can eat their food, so.
What time is it?
Six PM.
On a Monday evening.
No, I mean, uh, Monday evening.
So for information. I told... I committed that I would go.
I would, yeah.
I tell you, they really have good food. I mean, uh, some of our seniors in different parts have a lot of experience at cooking.
Yeah, that's for sure. Okay. That...
That's it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, first of all, um, I want to inform the public that we've all agreed... One of the things I believe this county commission is trying to do is make ourselves more accessible to the community. And we've all agreed that we will be with several of the staff at the farmer's market this Saturday from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. A meet and greet.
That's this Saturday?
Yeah.
I was fishing. I guess I have to fish.
What about the farmer market?
Well, we can hold off. We can go there, yeah. Where... You can wear your leather outfit later. But, um... You could... The meet and greet that could...
I'll step back. Getting, Bill.
Meet and greet the county commissioners. We're gonna have, you know, staff there. We have paper where people can ask questions, also have forms. If we can't answer the question, we also will have, uh, the people, whether it be Debbie, Diane, we've invited all the people. I know Solid Waste Authority's gonna be there. I've asked Rails to... So we're able to be there for three hours to try and be out in the public. So I would hope that the people would come by and stop by the first. The second thing, um, I didn't know where it was, but since we discussed it under when we approved the modifications of the budget, I don't know if people realize, we made some agenda item changes. And I want to make sure that the people realize that what we were wanting to do and what we did was give a thousand dollars extra to all employees who work over one year. And then five hundred... Full-time employees, sorry. And five hundred dollars to part-time employees who've worked over one year. Um, and I want to state this, that I realize that we can't force each department to give them the raise. However, our recommendation is that we are giving it to them to give to those employees for a raise. So that is the intent. And I hope that each department head is going to do that. Is that a fair way I'm allowed to say that?
That's a proper way to say it.
Okay. Because that...
That's our hope and wish.
That is our hope and wish. And if they do not do that, that will be looked upon unfavorably next year. I mean, I just want... Everyone, this is for all employees. And that's what gets me in trouble. The third thing I do want to say is I do want to thank West TV for being here. This was a perfect meeting to come to. I also want to state that it is also working because if you heard the Mr. Melick say that he listened to the tape to know exactly what we talked about. So again, the communication, it's working. You know, Jeff, I want to thank you, Carrie. Also, this is working. We are getting out the information and hopefully we will continue to have more tapings of the programs. And we'll find out exactly when this is on TV. And that is it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bloom. I really don't have anything today. I've been doing a lot of other things. But I do have something.
Just one thing?
Just one thing. Here we go.
No, I'll save that for work session. I'll stop right there. Well, yeah, I will. I... We've... I've been attending the senior center and we're showing some progress there. And we did look at that budget. We're gonna continue on that. And there's some questions about budgets and all. And they... I don't know why they did it, but I would rather tell you all than... They drafted me to be treasurer so I could look at their money.
Oh, you got money, loan?
Well, with the senior center.
You need some money for a bridge.
How many bake sales are we gonna have to have for the bridge?
I was gonna just say that work session, but I might as well just make it public, you know, that... You know, so yesterday they voted me in to be treasurer. I asked, begged anyone else to do it.
It was a senior's mom.
Senior mom, yeah. So I'll... I'll be... I'll be able to answer questions hopefully on the treasurer there. So that's really all I had. Sheriff, do you have anything, sir?
It's true. Very briefly. I wasn't gonna say just one thing. Wanted to give you copies of the two thousand thirteen sheriff's settlement and happy to announce that with Kelly's expertise and that of the... Chris from Software Systems, of course, everything did balance out. You'll see all the funds and the ending balance of what the carryover is. Everything is in balance.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I don't know if Kelly's still here or not. Oh, there she is. Thank you, Kelly. We appreciate all your efforts. This in spite of your boss. I'm sorry, Sheriff. That's what I meant to say. You know, I misspeak every once in a while. In addition to the contribution of the boss. Thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate the... Gotta have a little joviality every once in a while. Is there any other elected officials? Oh, yeah, there's the assessor back there, Mr. Music.
I have some positive feedback for the assessor. This is getting to be a habit. But I had a taxpayer call me and I contacted Chuck. I don't know where he's at, but... And he got with the taxpayer and the taxpayer called me and said that they appreciated really the assessor's office getting in touch with them. And I'll tell you, that's a new level of service out of the assessor's office. Particularly when taxpayers call you and say, "Hey, you know, they really got back to me and they're gonna call me again and get with me." And I... As part of the county commission, I appreciate that, Mark.
Uh, is there any other elected officials up missing? Diane, you have anything further? Bobby?
I'm just glad you all are taking care of this bridge to get this put away. So I'm gonna do some stuff.
Well, we took... We reached our hands out again. You know, we've had trouble reaching our hands out. People keep wanting to slap it away. But let's hope this works.
We're making proposals. The next proposal, if we have to, we'll have to close it. That's the worst thing.
Right. That's... Well, that's the thing. If they're not gonna help us, we'll have no choice but eventually close it. Renetti, you have anything? Jamie?
Not just Tom.
Debbie, anything?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from the public? Mr. Beaufort?
Dave Beaufort, sixty-two hundred Middle Lane Drive. Few comments to make on this annexation. Wasting a lot of time with this county, a lot of money. Now, my brother and I are the largest developers in the county. Had a lot of taxes. What I would call minor would be two, three thousand in taxes, not hundreds of thousands. What I would call minor is a couple of house locks or an acre or two or three or four or five. A hundred acres is not minor. This is absolutely ridiculous, the games that have been played and what's going on with the county. Westover does not... If they're in trouble, there's a real simple, simple thing to do in this county. What we need to do is take Westover, Star City, Granville, and they all need to merge into Morgantown. That would be a great thing. Get rid of the B and O tax. There's two states in the United States of America that I know have it. West Virginia, Washington. That's the biggest reason nobody wants to come in. Now, it's been said, things migrate. I'm not afraid to speak publicly and talk to each and every one of you the way I talk and how I operate. But it's thievery stealing them all. You're not gonna come after them all. Then wanna come... Then the city of Morgantown wanna come to you, wanna come after my shopping center and all my colleagues together and take what we've worked hard for. If you need more money, operate better. That's what we do as business owners. It is not a minor boundary adjustment. A minor boundary adjustment would be going through Westover. I understand that Wedgewood and all that stuff on the left side of the road's not in the city limits. Is that true? Has anybody looked at that? Is Westmont not in there? You're saying none of that is in the city of Westover? I would look to see if you want a minor boundary for money. But the bottom line is, is that's on the other side of the interstate. This has been decided. We're burning a lot of time on this minor boundary stuff. There's a lot to be said and a lot more, and I'll speak at the public hearing too. But this stuff I keep coming back is just absolutely a waste of time. And I think it needs to be studied on the business end. There's minor cuts and bruises and there's major. And going in there trying to take that mall for the money... They offered to come in in the beginning. The Westover didn't want them. Westover's in trouble. Like I said, fold up. But I'm not gonna take up any more time since there's gonna be a public hearing. But I think there needs to be a lot of thought about conversations. And I've had them with each one of the commissioners. They were pleasant with two of you. Tom and I don't see eye to eye. But there was also some deals, I understand, made where, you know, he was backed by Dave Johnson and he put his signs up over Westover that he would vote to put the mall back in. And I think Bartola, how can you be the neighbor? Anytime I've been the forty-odd times over in Morgantown doing anything, somebody has to recuse themselves. And it's been many a times. How can you vote for something if you live there and it's gonna benefit you?
Okay.
That's a violation of civil rights.
Okay. Thank...
It ought to be looked into.
I think this is inappropriate. And I think Mr. Beaufort needs censored. If he has a comment, make your comment.
Well, that's the long man, I mean.
Your accusations are not appropriate, but your comments are certainly welcome.
Check and see if they're factual. Thank you.
I'm sure I could retaliate, but I will.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartola. And for Mr. Sell?
As for the record, I am Charles Sell. I live in Westover at four seventy Ohio Avenue. With regard to what consumed the most time here, I heard Mr. Melick ask you to respect his clients, both of them right of due process. With regard to a motion for reconsideration that's now pending before Judge Fox. Unfortunately, we have in this jurisdiction, I believe, conflicting orders to different judges that are sat on this. The first order, of course, being that of Judge Gachau who found that the prior commission didn't satisfy all the requirements of the law and that you start all over again. And you did. And you reached as a commission, not respectively the individual sitting behind the desk, an order that was adopted, a final memorandum, which Commissioner Callen drafted, I'm sure. That made the case ripe for adjudication. In my judgment, I'm not an attorney, but I've knocked around in such matters for a long, long time. So I'm speaking from my personal experience. The order satisfied each and... I've read it meticulously, every word in it. I believe the order satisfied every single thing that Judge Gachau required of you in that order. And then he bailed out on the whole thing, leaving Judge Fox to deal with a motion to dismiss by Westover. He summarily granted it, I believe, and... Put us right back where we started. Okay? Well, when a case is ripe for adjudication, it's ripe for adjudication. If all the requirements of the court, no matter who's sitting behind the bench, were satisfied, that case became ripe for adjudication. Mr. Melick asked this body to respect his right, his client's right to due process. And I believe you've effectively denied it with your action here to that or attempted to. And I believe that's an eight-hundred-pound gorilla that's sitting, watching over the whole thing now. And it's gonna come back to haunt you. Another matter, two others actually, and I'll be brief. The matter of what Mr. Beaufort said about things that are not a part of Westover that should be, the Wedgewood property and several others were annexed a long, long time ago in Westover. And the records in the assessor's office show it to be a fact. So he's incorrect to that extent about what he said in his opinion.
Westmont's in Westover?
All right. You all could discuss that.
Westmont? Earl told me it wasn't yesterday.
You're addressing us, Mr. Sell. What else you want to say?
Uh, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Sell. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Are we going to... We're way, way behind schedule. We're gonna be here till after five or six tonight. Are we going to adjourn and just go to lunch and then come back for work session?
Yeah. I would move that we do that. Because we have a lengthy...
We have a lengthy work session, you know. So, all right.
Of course, we can get some sleep.
Nobody talking in here while we're trying to conduct business. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.